I'll call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for June 18th, 2013. And with that, we'd ask for real call.
Councilmember Trulson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Coontz.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. In this republic which stands one nation under God, and in its own own liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'd like to welcome everyone that is here for their council meeting tonight. And with that, we do have, I think you received an updated agenda, which has 1.4.2 for Senator Jensen and 3.5.3, first reading of proposed ordinance 1313 for food vending process. With that, Charles Entertainment, motion for the change.
Motion's approved as noted.
Motion by Brent Svenby. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to presentation, and we have an award for financial reporting achievement for Rhonda Mohn, for the financial director, and with that, we'll go to Chris.
I would ask Rhonda to come down. I'm very pleased to report to the council and city that our finance director has been awarded the Financial Certificate of Achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government or county in financial reporting, and it's a statement remembered as a significant accomplishment by government tennis management. This award has been awarded to Rhonda Mohn, our finance director, and we are one of 98 cities out of 800 cities that have received this award, and it is a high achievement. And due to Rhonda and her staff, I would also congratulate them.
Thank you, and congratulations, Rhonda. It's well deserved. With that, we'll move on to the next item, 142, which is for Senator Vicki Jensen, recap of 2013 legislative session. Please join us at the podium.
Thank you. It's great to follow something like that. Congratulations. That's amazing. Senator Vicki Jensen just finished my first term. It was a great first term for me as an individual. I was able to pass like six, I think it was six bills finally through the committee process and onto the floor, and then signed by the governor, which I, there were up 3,000 bills that were presented in the House and the Senate, and 140-some were passed. That gives you an idea of what we did. What I'd like to update you all on is the effort to create and rebuild the partnership that has been, been there, and between city, local, county, and then the state government. It was of high priority during this budgetary cycle, and I think there were some things that the city should be pretty happy with, the increase in LGA for cities. If you look on the handout, Oatana, it looks like $794,881 increase in local government aid. Some of the other things that we did was passed through the Transportation Committee, the wheelage tax, and the ability for local governments to do this local option sales tax. Some of those items I'm not as impressed with, but at least we're giving local governments some authority and some ability to try to raise some revenue for some of the infrastructure issues and deferred maintenance that we've had and continue to have to try to find a solution to. One of the things while I was in session was, because it is a budget year, and we had to try to balance the budget. The goals that we had in education and some other areas were very large, and in order to meet them, we had to try to raise some revenue. And anytime you do that, there's, of course, a lot of different ideas on exactly how you do that. And even when you have the same party in control of the governor and the Senate and in the House, you still end up with some disagreements on how we're going to do that and get that done, and that's why the session ended up going until 11:59 and 30-some seconds, 20-some seconds to spare before we would have to go into a special session. But we did do some good things. I was not able to vote on the final tax bill. The main reasons why I didn't was the original bill that came out of the Senate included clothing tax and some other types of reforms that I could not vote for, and some business-to-business tax was still in there, which I said from the beginning of the session, we would have to be really careful not to have unintended consequences. When the bill went to conference committee and came back, some of that was taken out, but it still included some business-to-business tax. One was warehouse taxing, and another was repairs on vehicles and maintenance, and especially in our district, egg-type repairs would be, the labor would be taxed, which it had not been, and that's the primary reason that I voted against the tax bill. The good thing is that they put a date on it as of April of 2014, of when it would go into effect, so there's still some time to work on that and see if we can make sure we don't have an unintended consequence for our district, and I'll be working on that next year. I was just up at the Capitol today for my first meeting as chair of Fraud Task Working Group, so something that I'll be working on over the interim, and I would be very happy to hear from you if there are some fraud issues that you would like to share with me, and my contact information is on the sheet. Next year, we hope to do a comprehensive fraud legislation, so we're going to work on that all summer. I know the cities have been having some, over the last few years, some decline in revenue, and you've done a really good job of holding things down and trying to make sure that you can maintain the services at the level that people expect. I hope that the package that we passed is beneficial and helpful to you to move forward and maybe try to take up some of that deferred things that have been on your, on your agenda and waiting for some revenue. But I'd be happy to answer questions. I did serve on the Transportation Committee and did a lot of work on what's called corridors of commerce. If you have any questions on that, I would be happy to answer some of those. That's the other thing that I'll work on over the interim, make sure that Highway 14 is in the front of everyone's mind until we can get some funds and to get some of that work done. But I'd be happy to answer some questions.
I do have one that's on the sales tax.
Sure.
What happened with that? Are we able to go to the public for a vote on this, or do we have to go to the state first, like it used to be?
The way that the legislation passed was that you would not have to get approval from the legislature to have a local option sales tax. That was a change.
We can prepare a local option sales tax proposal, take it to the public.
That's correct.
Without having to take it to the legislature.
That's my understanding of the legislation as it was passed.
Okay.
Yeah, that is correct. And the other thing is, we did remove sales tax for the cities as well, local governments any of the sales tax. Yes.
I heard on the news just before it came tonight that the bill, the money that Rochester's getting, part of the bill said you can do as you please a little bit, and the news was tonight that they might share $5 million with surrounding communities and economic development because they feel that they're all part of the, why don't we give it to Highway 14?
Good idea. I'll bring that up.
At the end of the bill, they said the bill was, gave Rochester the option to handle it as a fit, the way it's on the news tonight, but now they're saying $5 million they might share with the communities around, which was a big surprise that they would allow that.
Sure.
Because it was supposed to be to build the new building and...
The part of the tax bill that included the Destination Medical Center was very innovative, I felt, because there isn't any money put in until Mayo puts some money out, and they start doing things, and once they show that, then we put some money in to help the city of Rochester, make sure that they're able to keep up with the infrastructure needs. When they're talking about 20,000 employees, that means them plus their spouse and their families, the amount of changes, you can imagine if that happened here, do we have the roads, do we have the schools, do we have the, do we have the things that we need in order to accommodate that amount of people? So that was the intent of the legislation, is that as Mayo put in money, the state would put in some, and then some more money be put in, and then some more money. But I had not heard any of the specifics about what...
Tonight, and they said kind of the end of the, when they changed the bill just at the end, they gave them more...
More flexibility on what they were able to use the funds for? That's very possible. I'm not aware of that.
Try to share the $5 million with surrounding community.
Well, if that helps with the infrastructure, I guess I'm okay with that.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a surprise.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand your point.
I've just got a comment, Vic, in regards to the legacy grant.
Sure.
There continues to be a disparity between how outstate and metro works as far as dollars, and I'm also concerned in regards to some legislators want to turn this grant into something more than it was positioned for.
Yeah.
And basically, what they want to do is make sure that this money remains in the metro area. And it's, that grant's very important to outstate Minnesota, and I would like to see, I would like to see us be on a level playing field with the metro in regards to cash upfront on...
Is it a specific part of the legacy funds that you're talking, is it, or is it in general?
General.
Okay, because I can tell you from my standpoint in the Senate, we had a different position than they had in the House, and that was a big conversation that happened during the session, and the Senate feels the way that you do, that those funds that are put into greater Minnesota, it helps all of Minnesota. And if we want to make those kinds of changes, there has to be a really, and I think that's part of why Governor Dayton vetoed part of the legacy bill that he did, because he understands that too. So we have that in our favor, that, that they understand that we need that. So it will keep, keep coming up, though. You're right. We'll have to be diligent in watching what kind of bills are passed, you know, every session, because that will continue to be a struggle for legislators that are there, and that's why I'm really happy to be there to make sure and watch out for that kind of transfer of even the idea of what the legacy funds are for.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is next year bonding year?
Next year is a bonding year, and it, I think the appetite for bonding for next year is big in the House and the Senate. This year, the House was pushing a lot more for bonding and had a lot of projects that they wanted to get done this year too, and thought that we should be able to, but that did not pass. And the Senate never really did have an appetite for a larger bonding bill, but we fought really hard to keep the capital restoration project going. That actually failed in the House, and so we had to come up and put a bill together right at the end of session. That was one of the last things we did to make sure. If you've been up at the Capitol recently, there's scaffolding and all kinds of things on the one side. What they've discovered is some of those fissures and cracks within that material are acting just like the road, water and ice go, and pieces or chunks of it are coming off the side of the building. So we really didn't want that process to stop. They've discovered if they grind that down, they can take care of those fissures and those cracks and save that stone, and it would be a huge cost if we didn't try to maintain it and fix it right now. And what would have happened if we went to pass the capital restoration bill is that scaffolding and all that would have came down, and we would have had to pass it in a bonding bill next year, and then it would have all went back up. So we were very happy that the House finally did pass that portion of the bill so that we could keep that restoration going.
Thank you. One of the other things is that corridor of commerce.
Yeah.
Bill that was passed, one of the things that I heard when I was up there was some of the metropolitan legislators were looking at that with...
Eager eyes, yeah.
They saw an opportunity there.
Yeah.
And to me, it was for, and it was designed around Highway 14, and it should not be used for fixing what we got, but to update and expand rather than just going in as fixing, because the comment I heard was, hey, with this corridor of commerce, we can now fix Highway 494 around the west side of the Twin Cities.
Wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, we need to be very cautious that, you know, that doesn't sneak into the...
Right. And that's why the language in the bill, if, when it passed out of the Senate Transportation Committee, it actually had language that said District 6 and District 7 needed to prioritize a section of road that's between two-lane and a four-lane and a two-lane between two regional centers. It basically listed Highway 14 without actually listing, listing the highway. Now, corridors of commerce is set up for projects that are like that all over the state, so we have to be aware that there are these projects, and what happens is you've got regional centers, and why they call it corridors of commerce is because it's between two larger cities that create a lot of traffic along that road, and they started the projects on the two ends, and then you're left with these little sections that they just can't seem to get the funding to finish those and get them completed. So the language in corridors of commerce, and there's actually a list of the ones that would qualify, and 14 is on there, so the possibility that it would be something else is always, it's there. But because of the way that it's worded, and because it goes by district, each district would have to turn in a project that would match that criteria. The best thing about corridors of commerce, and I want everybody to be aware of this, is it requires that the Department of Transportation do a report on who's granted, what the project is, how much is being spent on the project. So that is information, and it's going to be done in a different way than what we currently get that information. So as a taxpayer, you're going to be able to understand how that money that we got put in there, that $300 million, would be utilized to make sure some of these projects get completed, and 14 is the top of the list. It is.
Okay. Thank you. Raymond.
As of my understanding, they're going to build a new big parking ramp for the legislature, because some motel's going to tear down or something, but my question is, wouldn't it have been cheaper to bus in a bunch of people than where it's empty for eight months of the year or the big, are we, are we not going to build a huge parking ramp because of...
We're building a parking ramp to coincide with the building that we're building. It's a Senate office building. Currently, there isn't enough room within the Capitol to house the people that work within. But the biggest problem, the biggest issue is the hearing rooms are not big enough to accommodate the public to come in and hear the testimony that we need to make available to the public to come. Some of these hearing rooms only allow like 100 people or 50 people, and so the idea was that we would open up the Capitol to leadership and hearing rooms and the public, and then have another building similar to what the House of Representatives has in the state office building. It would be a Senate office building.
I was just surprised, maybe we could just bus in, sets empty for, I mean, you guys are all gone, it's not very full of people.
Well, and all the staff stays there, so there's still staff there throughout the Capitol, but the senators, you're right, they're not, they're not there. But that's what the parking ramp, my understanding is that's what the parking is for.
Any other questions?
Vic, I've got, I've got a follow-up on the corridors. Of all the projects, is there another project that has more traffic than, than what we have between Oatana and Rochester?
You know, I'm...
More heavily used road than this project?
You know, I'm not sure about the traffic counts. I don't know that answer to that question. But what we do have is safety, the safety rating on the road, and the thing that 14 has going for it, and what has made a big difference, is the amount of people that are backing and understanding the importance of getting that road completed. Because it goes from Mankato, well, New Ulm, we want it to New Ulm, over to Rochester, because Rochester's involved, Mankato's involved, and all the people that live along there, plus the businesses, the advocates, Highway 14 Partnership, there has been an outcry at the Capitol, and they noticed and they heard, and they consider it the most organized group advocating for something like this. So we have to be diligent and keep going on that, and we have to continue to make sure that they keep hearing us and keep understanding this. But that corridors of commerce was developed for 14. Because the money keeps getting diverted to other projects, we needed something dedicated to complete this, and that's what corridors is meant to do, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much for coming in and giving us an update, and look forward to another one soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to financial report, and I'll do a quick recap of the finances. We have $32,304 for Central Valley Co-op for fuel purchases, $62,728 for League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, quarterly workman's comp premium, $45,203 for rinders, golf course chemicals, herbicides, et cetera, $119,746 for Southeast Service Cooperative Monthly Health Insurance Premium. We have $242,782 for other expenditures for a grand total of $502,763 for total expenditures. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license permits, board commission minutes and reports, monthly department reports, and event permits and contracts, all grouped into one motion to kind of help us move along. Any questions from the council on the consent agenda items?
Some will be approved.
We have a motion to approve by Raymond Trulson. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these have been approved. Thank you. Next item is action items, number 3.1.1, wine and on sale, 3-2 liquor license for American of Oatana, 245 Florence Avenue, and we'll go to Chris with that.
Thank you, Les. We have received an application from John Spitzak. He's the chief manager at the American in Oatana here, and it's a new request for liquor at this location. He has completed the background check. Chief Hiller has no objection to the issuance of this license. The annual fee for the wine license, $150. Annual fee for the 3-2 liquor license is $100. They had stated that they would like these licenses in order to host receptions and the like at, at the hotel, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council?
Approved, approved.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Raymond Trulson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Now, 3.1.2 off sale, 3.2 liquor license for Target Store, T1089 at 301 Park Drive, and again, we go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. We have received this application from Target Corporation for a 3-2 liquor license. They have completed all the necessary insurance information and paid the appropriate fees. Chief Hiller has no objection, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Chris, is that part of their remodeling they're doing right now?
I believe that they are going to do remodeling and do an expansion of more to the grocery line, and this is part of that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Next one is 3.1.3 street vendor license for Fun on Wheels LLC for Todd Carver of Ferb Bowl. Again, back to Chris.
Thank you. This is a new request for a street vendor license. It will be for a new mobile shaved ice truck for the applicant. A background investigation has been completed, and the chief has no objection to the issuance of the license. We've received the insurance information, all the appropriate fees have been paid. He was advised that our current ordinance for street vendors is under review and that they, there will be an ordinance proposed tonight, later in the agenda during our meeting, so he's fully aware of that. He had communicated that his business would more involve being invited to events where he would sell his shaved ice, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. So what you're looking, talking about is invitations to neighbor parties, church socials, et cetera.
Exactly.
Raymond.
Is that, is that going to be ice cones when they said ice?
Shaved ice.
I mean shaved ice cones.
I believe the applicant is here.
When they said shaved ice.
Todd?
Switches nature name and...
Todd Carver with Fun on Wheels LLC. I'm the owner. Yeah, it is. It's shaved ice. I sell it in a cup from a mobile truck. Some of you may have seen it outside. Outside, the kids or adults can put their own flavorings on. The majority of my business I use for fundraising, that's why I got into the business. I fundraise with churches, schools, sports teams, that kind of thing. That's what my business is. So, yeah, it's shaved ice. I am also, by the state, approved for prepackaged ice cream, but I don't currently do that. I don't want to fall into the stigma of the old ice cream man from many years ago. We try to portray a little more professional image than what we traditionally know as the ice cream man from years ago.
So you're not planning on traveling to, around the community?
I will travel around the community if it's allowed. That's, I'd like to do that because I want to establish routes with certain areas of the city, but the majority of my business will be doing fundraising.
Somebody invite you to come and...
Yep. Yeah, graduations I do, I do birthday parties, all different kinds of things, corporate events.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Some will be approved.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Raymond Trulson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Congratulations and good luck with it. Moving on to 3.2.1 right-of-way access agreement with Steel County and BNB Development Corporation. Go to Troy with that.
There's currently a right-in, right-out access from 26th Street into the commercial development at Latmar Drive. The access falls under the county's jurisdiction as 26th Street is a county road. The current right-in, right-out does not meet the county's access management policy, but agreement was made between the developer and the county varying from that policy back in 2003 for that development. In the last 10 years, there has been some commercial developments, but that has been occurred by that limited access. There's now been some renewed interest for commercial development within that development, and there is also property on the south side that is now for sale and being marketed for commercial development. Oatana Partners for Economic Development has been working with the developer and the county to achieve a full access to capitalize on this commercial potential. An agreement has been arrived at to allow for a full access. The county, the developer, and the city would enter into this agreement. Developer would pay for the construction of the full access as well as meet the other requirements stated in the agreement. There are safety and engineering standards stated in the agreement for this intersection to meet, and that changes to the intersection can be made if those standards are not met. The cost of any future improvements to the full access would be split between the county, which has jurisdiction of 26th Street, the east and west legs, and then the city, which would have jurisdiction over the north and south legs. Developer would be responsible for the cost of the reversion to a right-in, right-out should that be required under the agreement. The county has approved the agreement at their last county board meeting, and the city attorney has been working with the county attorney and the developer's attorney in arriving at this agreement. The League of Minnesota Cities has reviewed the agreement, and they have recommended some changes, and I think you've got a copy of those relative to the insurance requirements. There are no costs to the city for the construction of the full access. At some point, changes are needed to the intersection. The city would be responsible for half the cost, much like it is figured today when there is a county road and a city street intersecting within the city limits. So staff would recommend approval of the right-of-way access agreement for 26th Street.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council? Raymond.
The person representing that group would have been here tonight, but he had a prior commitment, so when I visited with him on the phone, you know, so he would be here, but for that reason, he couldn't be here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson. We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved for that update with that agreement. Thank you. We'll move on to 3.2.2, DNR flood grant purchase, 321 Le Monde Road. And that will go back to Troy.
So DNR has some funds, again, available for the allocation, to be allocated to help with the 2010 flood event. They're making grant money available to cover 100% of the costs associated with the purchase and removal of home desert and flood plain. The city has an existing grant with the DNR for $220,000 for the purchase and demolition and site restoration for properties at 1018 North Elm and 349 Le Monde Road and those projects have been completed. This proposed grant amendment would add another $500,000 to our existing grant. The grant has been amended and sent to the city to be signed. The additional funds would pay for the proposed home we have tonight for purchase as well as purchasing additional homes within the flood plain. All funds must be used within one year, so June 30th of 2014. The grant program is a voluntary program and certain criteria must be met. City has an agreement with the property owner at 321 Le Monde Road to purchase the property for $85,000 contingent on city council approval and the final execution from the DNR. There is a possibility for this home to be moved. For this grant, all expenses are paid for by the grant and therefore we could use a private contractor to remove that home. The property will still have to be owned and maintained by the city after the house is removed as stipulated in the grant agreement. The basement of this house was filled during the 2010 flood event, just like all of them along there on Le Monde Road. This area has experienced flooding many times in the past and best long-term goal is to have those all removed as stated in our hazard mitigation plan. Again, the grant will cover 100% of the costs associated with the purchase and removal of the house and site restoration, including any city labor should that be needed. And the city will have to upfront any out-of-pocket expenses before reimbursement of the grant is received. So staff would recommend authorizing signing of the DNR grant amendment and the purchase and removal of the house from the flood plain at 321 Le Monde Road.
Thank you, Troy. One of the things that was stated in here is a possibility of moving it. Has the house been inspected? Do?
We have gone through it. We brought the bill unofficial through. There are some things that would be needed. You know, it's really, I guess the thought would be to go to bid on it and leave it up to the contractor to decide whether it's worthwhile or not to move it or not. It might not be beneficial or feasible to do so. It might just be demoed, but it is a possibility. There would be some things that would need to be done for it to be moved and of course you have to have a place to put it as well.
Well, I know of a number of lots in town where we've had fires that have destroyed the homes where a possibility of a home like this would fit into it.
Yep, and that's a thought we had too and that's why we want to leave it open to that possibility and leave it up to the low bidder to decide whether that's feasible or not.
Okay. Thank you. Raymond?
I think I remember moons ago when there was, not this flood, but the flood before, the flood before, I remember Mike Johnson getting up and saying, "They have a choice to do it now or there never will be another chance." Now, has something changed because they were offered to do that before? And I remember him saying, "Do it now or you'll never get a chance to do it again."
Different funding sources for these type of programs. If it's a federal hazard mitigation grant, those are typically only made available within a certain period of time of the flood. This is a DNR grant. Typically, and the DNR has had this program ongoing, typically it's a 50-50 match for this sort of program because of the 2010 flood. The legislature allocated monies to help with certain programs. This was one of them, where they stuck some additional monies in and then they made it available at 100%.
I'm not questioning what's happening, but I was surprised to hear.
Yeah, there's different funding sources.
That again, because I remember him saying, "They have a choice now or never," and they didn't take it then and, you know, and that's why I was surprised to hear.
We're using a different funding source.
I understand that, but I mean, you know, I mean.
Come on.
This property, would that then be considered an extension of Morehouse Park? Will this be parkland or just city-owned property?
This would be part of parkland. It's adjacent to parkland. It's one of the reasons it's in our hazard mitigation plan as a targeted area because it is adjacent to parkland. So it makes it, what we don't want is to pick spots within the community that we may not have land adjacent to and we have these pockets all over. This is adjacent to the river, adjacent to our parkland. It'll just become part of the parkland.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to Resolutions 60-13, update charitable gambling permit, Community Charities of Minnesota. And there we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Basically, what we're asking is, it's a housekeeping item. We need approval to approve the different, oh, I'm sorry. As I said, this is a housekeeping item for council. Community Charities of Minnesota has a gambling permit at the bowling center. The bowling center recently changed ownership and so the premise permit needs to be updated to show the new name of the bowling center. So this is not a budget impact. It's simply an update of the current permit held by Community Charities of Minnesota. So staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Second by Brent Fendby. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to 61-13, adopt five-year capital improvement plan. And with that, we'll go to Rhonda.
This is a request to the city council to approve the resolution adopting the five-year capital improvement plan. Staff has been working to compile a detailed five-year capital improvement plan for the years 2013 through 2017. This plan is designed to create, support, maintain, and finance the city's present and future infrastructure and equipment needs. The first year of the plan has already been appropriated by the council through the 2013 budget process. The remaining four years serve as a guide for planning purposes and will be subject for review on an annual basis. No project is guaranteed to occur in the year planned. Council will annually appropriate the future year's projects and adopt the five-year CIP as part of their long-term planning. The CIP plan is available on the city's website and we will also have a couple copies available at the public library for the citizens to review. Staff recommends that the council approve Resolution 6113.
Thank you, Rhonda. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Sorry.
Second.
Second by Brent Fendby. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you, Rhonda. And with that, we'll move on to 3.4362-13, authorize sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2013A. And I think we'll go back to you with that, Chris.
Okay. We have Todd Hagan from Aylers here to give us the background information on the bond issue that we're going forward with this year. I'll turn it over to Todd.
Great. Thank you, Rhonda. Council president, council members, congratulations again, Rhonda, on your award. Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, I've been here before. Ellers has worked with the city for many years as independent public finance advisor. So we had direction from staff to assemble a bond issue that we proposed to publicly sell for you folks. I would come back on July 16th with bids and you can say yes or no to the low bid. So hopefully I get some attention on this bond issue. We had pretty good success today in St. Louis Park. Had a good bond sale. It was relatively short, 10 years or so like this one. And the market seems to be pretty hungry out there for these shorter, larger bond issues. When you get really long, the rates get really high, even though we're at like a 50-year low still. So again, the yield curve is pretty steep. So you're staying underneath the radar and we should have a pretty good bond sale, but the market is volatile, sort of going back and forth. We'll see what we get on July 16th. So really, to summarize the pre-sale report, we have sort of three components here on this bond issue. It's a 2013 street and utility and East Broadway Improvement Project, which is payable from special assessments and a tax levy, pretty standard improvement bond portion. There's an equipment portion, and that's a 10-year portion, payback. There's a street sweeper and patrol vehicle for an equipment portion of this bond issue, which is relatively small. It's under $200,000 of this bond issue. That's a five-year section of this, payable primarily from a tax levy. And then we've got the Viricon Sanitary Sewer and Water Extensions out to that project and that's a tax increment portion. Ed's been out here to run through that tax increment with you. And that is, that's another portion. It's relatively, that's a larger one. It's like $2.2 million of financing on that, but there's a little over $1 million of grants, so that ends up being a little over a million, one or so of a portion. That equals $3,890,000 at this point. That's the bond issue we're proposing to set out to the market. And again, the tax increment portion's a nine here. So when you bundle this up, which is the most efficient way to do it, we could have three bond issues separately here. We'd all make more money. But we put all three together, one bond issue, one 10-year bond. It's large, it's short, it's got three components and it's, Rhonda will know exactly what to do and what the payback is for each portion. So we'll make it easy. We'll actually have these callable too in 2021. I know that's not that far away and that this isn't a large bond issue, but if there's some money in the account and we want to just sort of get rid of the bonds at that point, we can throw cash at it and be done with it too. So there's a point of exit on this as well. The city currently has a AA2 bond rating with Moody's. For every bond issue, we go through that bond process again. Again, Rhonda and Chris are probably pretty excited about that whole exercise that we'll be doing, but with that wonderful award and all your finances in check, should be smooth sailing. I think the state of Minnesota's got that AA2 with Moody's too, so you're right. You're right there with those folks. Standard and Poor's is another, is another rating agency that may recognize some of the efforts of the finance department a little bit more, but I don't see any indication at this point unless all of a sudden there is of any kind of a switch to a Standard and Poor's as opposed to a Moody's, so we'll probably stay right on track with that. We also look at, you know, at this 45, 50-year low, we always look for, is there any refinancing opportunities? Another thing high on the finance director's list of things to do, but we do, we look at it. They were close to saving some money. There's a 2006 C bond and a 2008 A bond that were out there that we always are looking at and right now they're not working like we'd like them to, so we'll keep an eye on them like we always do for an interest savings and may bring those back at some point if rates go down a little bit. Again, like I say, they're ticking up and it's kind of making a mess out of refinancings at this, at this point, some of them that are right on the borderline. So the, ahead of the acceptance of the resolution, if, you know, you want to modify anything tonight or any of the assumptions I've talked about for a discussion, feel free to do so otherwise. There's a resolution that gets our company going on this bond issue, so we'll package it up. We'll prepare an official statement, which is like, like an offering, sort of a prospectus on a stock. We call it an official statement. We'll get that going. We'll have a conference with the rating agency after the 4th of July with staff. Those don't take much more than an hour after we dump all this information at them and they kind of look at it and would like more information over the phone. Then we'll come back on July 16th at 7:00 with the results, so wish us all luck on that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
How many days do they get to bid on the interest? How many days?
Yeah, we'll have this official statement prepared before the 4th of July, kind of the week of July 1st. We will probably put it out there a week, a week and a half ahead of time. And then they have a chance to bid until, I don't have this through our system yet, but it's usually before noon on July 16th is when we get the bids. And typical underwriters and broker-dealers wait till the last minute, right? So they'll just move on. If they're losing bids, they'll switch over and do this and that. If they've got customers to buy this, they'll, Oatana is a really good credit and like, again, like St. Louis Park or Brooklyn Park or those folks too, so you shouldn't have any problem getting some attention on this anyway. So, yep, good question.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from the council?
So moved, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck with it.
Yep.
Get us our best rate. Okay, next item on the agenda is 3.4.463-13, authorizing DNR flood damage reduction grant agreement. And that will go to Chris.
Or Tri, were you gonna do this one? Or Kyle? I'm sorry.
Oh, Kyle, I'm sorry.
I'll take this one for quirky. The DNR called and they have an additional $99,000 in funds for cleanup from, that hasn't been used. And then they asked if we would have any use for that. We don't really have staff time to spend on this, but it is 100%. We can use contract labor for it. So this would be working with the Minnesota Conservation Corps to clean rivers through the parks, remove debris. An example would be up along the trail, along Lake Cole Meyer, up in that area. There's a lot of debris along the river in that area. So staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Kyle, and we sure use the money to do that, so. With that, now we'll move on to 3.4.564-13, order repair of retaining wall on Rose Street. And now we'll go to Kyle again.
Good evening. You probably noticed the retaining wall at Rose Street Pizza and the Blast had failed a little over a month ago. We have a retaining wall policy of splitting 50-50 with the city paying 50% and the property owner paying 50%. I met with the property owner. He has requested that his half be assessed for five years to the property and we recommend approval. If you've noticed, the work's already been done.
Thank you.
It was a dangerous situation, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council?
So moved, we approve.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion?
That's something Rocon guarantees for 100 years?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we'll move on to 3.4.665-13, authorize advertisement to forbid for Arts Center Expansion Project. And we go to Chris with that to start with.
Yes. Thank you, Les. We have here with us tonight Ray Lassina, Jim Brunner, Bob Sakora. We have here with us tonight Ray Lassina, Jim Brunner, Bob Sakora. They have some information they'd like to present, some financials that show that they're ready to move forward with the project, and I'm just going to turn it over to, to them.
If you'd like to join us at the podium?
I'm Ray Lassina, the President of the Arts Center. And I'm happy to report to you that we have all the funds available for this project. The funds in the bank and the pledges receivable total $561,421. The major donor receivables from the city, the Otana Foundation, the Winger Foundation. And we have a draw note, and I have a letter here from the bank that will authorize any draw that we would need, but we anticipate we are still going to be receiving funds. And with the city doing some site work, we have total funds raised of $1,246,421. The cost of the project is 1.1 million, which has been stable. The architect fees is $122,000, which is a total cost of $1,222,000. If everything were to stop today as far as any funds collected, we have an excess of $24,000. So we actually anticipate that we will not need to use the community bank draw note, but it's there in case we need it. We are anticipating more funds coming in, so therefore the draw note will probably not have to be used.
Thank you. Any questions from Raymond?
Ray, are we concerned that this time of the year bidding, you know, a lot of contractors, we're seeing a lot of higher numbers because bidding this late, a lot of them are booked up. Are we, do we feel uncomfortable about that at all?
I would have to ask Bob Sakora.
Well, it's just a question, late in the season, a lot of people are booked and...
I'm Bob Sakora, working with the Arts Center to coordinate their construction project. Right now, the construction climate, Raymond, is such that the roadside is really busy, street side, but the building component side is fairly stable. So we're hoping and praying that the prices will come in close to what we got projected. But everything's up in the air until we see numbers.
Yep. Any other questions from the council?
I'm moving approval that they proceed.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve proceeding. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Nate?
And Chris, the, the city's portion of the, of this came from earmarked funds. Was that sales tax?
That is correct. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to proceed with it. Good luck with it and congratulations. With that, we will move on to 3.51 First Reading Proposed Ordinance 1113 Food Vending on Public Streets. And there we'll go to Troy.
Well, there's actually two portions of this. This is the, there's the food vendor ordinance, which I think Mark Walbrand's worked on. There's also a portion here that addresses food vendor, food vending vehicles on private property within the central business district. So the food vending vehicles on private property, we're proposing that it be a conditional use permit within the B3 central business district. That allows for a little more review of these vehicles relative to lighting, traffic, where they're positioned. And it did go to planning commission, public hearing of planning commission, and they did recommend approval. So that's one portion of it. The second portion of it is the food vending relative to public streets. And I think I'll turn that over to Mark to handle on the public street portion.
Okay. Mark?
Proposed ordinance 1113. It's the culmination of about two years of discussions on this matter. Staff had the opportunity to review of any number of street vending ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. This is the culmination of about two years of review of different food vending ordinances. This, this ordinance follows the Rochester, Minnesota template in that it allows food vending, but it does prohibit it downtown because much as Rochester's, our downtown is relatively tight as well. We do allow, as everyone knows, food sales from trucks and the like when we have special events and those are obtained through special permits through the park and rec. This provides for licensure of the food trucks. They're permitted in areas defined in the ordinance, provides for their insurance, necessary equipment, how long they may be parked, and the times and hours of their, the sales. And this would be your first reading. This is the same ordinance that was presented to you at the study session about a month ago.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes? We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this? With this being an ordinance, I ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Trilson.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. Thank you. This has been approved and we will move on to 3.52 The First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 1313 Food Vending on Private Properties. And again, we'll go to Troy.
Well, that's the portion that I talked about, is having food vendor vehicles on private property within the B3 central business district, requiring a conditional use permit. Planning Commission has recommend approval on that.
Thank you. And again, the chair will entertain a motion on that.
So move.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any other discussion on that? Again, being an ordinance, ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Trilson.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. Again, all ayes. This has been approved and I appreciate the vote of confidence on that. We got it done and it's been a while, so. With that, we'll move on to the 3.53 First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 1213 Change in Sewer Rates. And there we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is follow-up from the study session at the last council meeting. The sanitary sewer rates have not been increased since 2004, and prior to that, it had been since 1988. So it hasn't been following a consistent pattern of small, regular increases. But the budget last year lost about $500,000. This year, we are looking to break even plus add additional work within the sanitary sewer system to reduce flooding. And the residential rate would go from the current $3 per month for the fixed charge to a proposed $10.25. And larger meter sizes would see increases at the same proportionate rate as the public utilities uses for the water meters. Bill, will they ask any questions? Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? Raymond?
I'm, I'm not supporting it tonight because I felt that we need to advertise it over three. I still think it's a big hardship on a lot of people and shame on us for, I think we need to look at it, not Kyle, glad Kyle came along, but man, every year the utilities look at rates and, you know, I, I feel bad, but I'm not, I think it should be advertised over three years. Still a hardship on a lot of people and companies, so I will not support it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 12-13.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion?
Well, I would, I sympathize with Raymond's point. Ideally, we wouldn't want to be making adjustments this large. But the fact of the matter is, we're at a point where if we look at what's coming, this, we're going to have, we're still okay with the wastewater fund or the, the fund at this point, but it is getting depleted pretty quickly. So I think we're at a point where we need to do this now. I'd rather not have to do it all in one lump sum, but the trend does not look good if we don't do something, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And with this being an ordinance, ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Trilson.
Name.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. This has been approved with one nave vote, and with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is miscellaneous items. 3.71 Authorized Temporary Street Closure for OPU Repurposing Building Project. And then we will go to Kyle again.
Good evening. We received a request to close Walnut from Bridge Street to the west entrance of Harland's Tire from the public utilities to conduct their remodeling. So they request a closer from July 1st to December 1st. We're recommending approval with the following conditions. That the crane be present when the street is closed, so that, you know, we're not just storing materials there in, in the meantime and keeping the street closed. That they would have a signage plan to us for approval for the detour, and any snow removal would be, of course, their responsibility, and that full access to the tire service would be maintained at all times.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? Greg?
Will this street be closed that whole entire time or is it just when they're doing certain functions down there?
I believe it'll be most of the time. You know, if they're, if the crane is mobilized in, I expect it'll stay. I don't believe they'll be bringing it in and taking it out frequently, but we don't just want it for, and I believe the public utilities are here, so maybe they...
Good evening, Joe Green, Public Utilities. I'm just here tonight, I wanted to thank everybody and thank you, Kyle, for looking into this. But OPU feels that it's important that we're able to get closure of the street for the entire duration of the project. If you're looking right now at the OPU and the power plant, what we're planning on doing initially is getting started right away in the parking ramp on the west side of the power plant. So we're really limited with access and storage because they'll be putting up the parking ramp and due to the straight river and the narrow area in between the power plant and the railroad tracks, it makes it very difficult to stage back there. And then if you go to the south, that's really where our customers park, where our engineering facility is. We really don't have the room there. And then as construction moves forward, we run into a situation where we need to get material and supplies into the power plant, as well as redoing the roof on the power plant, replacing the windows on the front. And I, it's, the study that we had done by our architecture determined that it'd be about a $500,000 cost if we weren't able to utilize it at all, the front. So it, there is a, an additional expense if we're limited to being able to utilize the front or east side of that power plant for getting material in and out, and when the crane is there, so. Any questions?
And I guess my question would just be, I assume you guys have spoken with Dan Bokey and he's aware of...
He is, he's...
Of the whole situation, there's, he's open to it and it won't cause him any problems.
He's... No, we, we spoke directly with Dan, owner of Harland's Tire, and they've been very supportive all along. They've had to withstand, you know, the demolition and the traffic and the pounding and the dropping of, you know, it was noisy removing all of that steel and hauling it out there, and they've been very, very easy to work with, so.
Thank you. Raymond?
Have you talked to Dan about, you know, that's where a lot of their employees park there? Have you talked to him about trying to help him? Like that whole street's full of their employees parking there, that, that's where they park.
He indicated that wouldn't be a problem. They would make some other accommodations.
Oh, really? I wonder where they're gonna, that's a lot of people to, to say you can't park there.
Give it.
I guess I would, I would ask that we keep an eye on the School Street intersection at the bottom of Oak. It's difficult, especially when school is on, to, to cross at that intersection, and we, we may want to look at putting in a four-way stop there. I see that that's going to be a lot of congestion right there and potential accidents as well.
I think, Kyle, that would be something to look at, is the School Street intersection there?
An oak. An oak?
And that is also county, so we...
Okay, but we...
We can discuss that with the county, so.
Traffic, traffic patterns and traffic studies there. So if you could work with the county on that to see what happens.
Well, they, they will have some signage in that area when they do the road, the street repair, correct?
The what?
The street repair. It'll be kind of in that area on the other side of School Street.
That'll be on School Street, just to the east of...
That'll be to the east of Oak.
Yes.
And will those be kind of at the same time?
Yes.
So it'll be some, there'll be cones and things out in that intersection already.
One of the northbound lanes will be affected, so it's going to be a little bit of a mess.
So that, that will, once again, really bottleneck that at, at the bottom of Oak.
Just trying to get across, we'll have to turn left, then we'll even worse, trying to go left on...
So we'll have to look for a different direction, guys. I was just thinking that you could probably stack some of your, your equipment on the railroad tracks, see if they would complain.
Sure they would. So the, so the alley stays open and, right?
Yes.
So you can act...
Yes, the alley would stay open.
Both south and walnut.
But if we have people cutting up there to try to get on Oak, it's gonna be...
I can, I imagine there'll be people trying to cut through Dan's parking lot. You know, that'll be, have to control that.
That's something that we will have to work with and control because, you know, the project has to be done. We've got to work with it somehow to get it done, so. Anyway, any other questions?
Thank you, motion we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion?
You're approving with the recommendations that Kyle is making or you're approving with recommendations?
Yep. I guess Nate, that would be your recommendations that Kyle had...
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to the recommendations Kyle has made and...
Okay. Okay, it is with the recommendations from Kyle. Seeing any others, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we'll move on to public comment, and this is for anything that's not on the agenda. If somebody wishes to speak, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we will move on to council comment, and we'll start with Raymond.
Just one comment. Senior games are in town this week and it's over 300 people are arriving that will be at the schools, and it's quite interesting, if you get a chance, the scheduling was in the Otana paper every day and every time where they're going to be, and it's very accurate that if people get a chance to get out and see some of those games, get over, Track and Field is the largest, I guess, there's about 100 and some people there. And so I just thought to let people know, we got a lot of visitors.
And there is no cost to watch the activities.
No cost to watch, nothing.
Please, please come and enjoy them.
And they gotta go to Faribault for racquetball, and they gotta go to the gun club south of town to trap shooting, and they gotta go to the rifle club north of town to shoot in, in archeries up there, but everything else is in the city of Otana, so.
Okay, thank you, Raymond. Nate?
Actually, I would just like to thank OPU and Joe. I spoke to Joe a week before last, or I got a phone call from a resident that a streetlight was out in an alley and they got it taken care of fairly quickly, and the resident was very happy, so thank you for getting that taken care of.
Thank you. Greg?
Nothing this evening.
Dave?
Nothing from Ward 3.
Kevin?
Fourth of July is coming up, fireworks, everyone's gonna have some legal, some illegal. Please be safe, be respectful of, of your neighbors.
Thank you, Kevin. Brent?
Nothing this evening.
Chris?
Just a couple of things. We had a very successful Otana Harry Winger Marching Band Festival. Again, it was a great event. The rain held, held off just long enough, so we were able to get all the bands through, and that was really wonderful. Also, I had a very successful safety camp. Over 200 kids participated in that, and it was great to see them all out there. It's just a wonderful program with, you know, many, many partners in that program too. So just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Chris. And as far as I'm, please have a safe fourth, enjoy it, and...
Also, I had a very successful safety camp, over 200 kids participated in that, and it was great to see them all out there. It's just a wonderful program with, you know, many, many partners in that program too, so just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Chris. And as far as I'm, please have a safe fourth, enjoy it, and come back to see us after that